This session is on administration of justice and legal administration. I would like to welcome the Secretary for Justice and the Judicial Administrator from the judiciary. I invite the Secretary for Justice to give an opening address, to be followed by the Judiciary Administrator. Chairman, for 2018-2019, the total estimated expenditure of the Department of Justice, DOJ, is about $2.29 billion, which represent an increase about 41.4%, around $617 million over the revised estimated expenditure for the last financial year, that is 2017-2018. When compared to the original estimated expenditure for the last financial year, the rate of increase is about 16.2% or $419 million. The increases relate mainly to two areas of expenditure: manpower and case handling. With regard to manpower, there will be a net creation of 79 posts in the coming year to cope with the increasing demand of government departments for legal services and manpower required for meeting our operational need. On case handling, the expenditure in question is related to court costs and briefing our expenses payable to barristers, solicitors, and other professionals in private practice to be engaged. Court costs and briefing our expenses are mainly dependent on the number of cases involved, their complexity and development. The estimated expenditure in this regard for each year is worked out on the basis of information available at the time of preparing the estimates and the principles of prudent management of public finances. However, the ultimate amount to be incurred will depend on the development and outcome of the judicial proceedings concerned. I'll now outline the DOJ's major areas of work in the new financial year. First, prosecutions. In the context of criminal prosecutions, our prosecutors will continue to handle prosecution work in a fair, impartial, and open manner strictly according to the Prosecution Code and relevant legal principles and available evidence. The Prosecutions Division, PD, has a heavy workload in handling various types of criminal cases in the normal course. In this regard, we would provide new resources in the financial year of 2018-19 for PD to create an additional seven Government Council, GC, posts to enhance its manpower in order to strengthen support for its legal advisory work, coupled with the additional GC posts created in the PD. In 2017-18, it would go some way to easing PD's pressure in the provision of legal advice, allowing council more opportunities to appear in court for prosecution work so as to refine their advocacy expertise, thereby further strengthening our prosecution team. We also keep our efforts in enhancing public understanding of the criminal justice system of Hong Kong and promoting public awareness of the rule of law. In this regard, we'll continue to organize events such as the Meet the Community and the Prosecution Week so as to keep in touch with the public. Program Two, CIVO. The CIVO Division, CD, will continue to provide legal services in civil law matters to all government bureaus and departments, including mainly the handling of all CIVO proceedings and matters related thereto involving the government and the provision of legal advice to ensure that the government's policies, legislation, and administrative measures are in compliance with the Basic Law and other applicable laws. On the development of mediation and promotion of more extensive use of mediation to resolve disputes, the mediation team of the CD will continue to support a steering committee on mediation. And the major initiative for the year will include: One, continuing to promote more extensive use of mediation to resolve disputes and the education of publicity in relation to the apology ordinance. Two, implementing the Pilot Mediation Scheme at the West Kowloon Mediation Centre for resolving suitable small claims tribunal cases and other appropriate disputes through mediation. Three, holding the Biennial Mediation Week in May, which would include a mediation conference entitled "Mediate First", exploring new horizons and other thematic events to further promote more extensive use of mediation for resolving disputes in various sectors. Four, exploring in-depth the operation and the infrastructure to be put in place. Let me start again. Exploring in-depth the operation and infrastructure to be put in place for evaluative mediation with a view to providing more choices for mediation uses so that the mediation will be put to its best possible use. Coordinating the DOJ's work in promoting mediation and arbitration services through the Joint Dispute Resolution Strategy Office and actively participating in and providing support to activities in the promoting of Hong Kong's international legal and dispute resolution services in the context of the Belt and Road Initiative. And lastly, assisting in the establishment of a mediation mechanism for investment disputes as provided in the Investment Agreement of the mainland and Hong Kong Crosser Economic Partnership Agreement, or CIPAR. Program Three, Legal Policy. The Legal Policy Division will continue to discharge the important role to uphold the rule of law by providing legal support to government departments on the Basic Law, Human Rights, and Constitutional matters. Over the years, the DOJ has striven to enhance Hong Kong's status as a leading center for leading international legal and dispute resolution services in the Asian-Pacific region. We continue to work with all stakeholders to promote relevant Hong Kong services in the mainland and overseas, including countries in the Asia-Pacific region as well as those along the Belt and Road. The DOJ will coorganize with relevant stakeholders. The Fifth Hong Kong Legal Services Forum tentatively scheduled for September this year in Guangzhou. The purpose of the event is to promote to mainland enterprises in the legal sector, Hong Kong as an international legal and dispute resolution services center in the Belt and Road Initiative and the Bay Area Development. The DOJ will also endeavor to enhance the legal framework for dispute resolution. Last June, the Legislative Council passed two amendment bills we introduced relating to arbitration and mediation to clarify the arbitrarability of intellectual property, IP, disputes, and to allow third-party funding for arbitration and mediation respectively. The major amendments relating to IP arbitration already took effect on the 1st of January this year. As per the provision on third-party funding for arbitration and mediation, we're now working on the establishment of a regulatory framework, which includes consulting the public on the issue of a code of practice, an appointment of an advisory body to monitor and review the operation of the regulatory framework with a view to early commencement of the legislative provision. To implement the recommendations made by the Law Reform Commission in its report on hearsay in criminal proceedings, we plan to introduce the relevant bill into the Legislative Council for consideration in this legislative session. Program Four, I want to talk about law drafting here. The Law Drafting Division, LDD, will continue to provide the professional drafting service required by the government to implement its policy initiatives. The ILD's objective is to prepare bilingual legislation that adequately reflects the required policy intent in a way that makes the legislation as easy as possible to understand. To enable the LDD to meet this objective, the LDD provides training to its legislative drafters to ensure the quality of professional service. The launch in February 2017 of Hong Kong e-legislation marked the beginning of a new era of free online access to the legislation of Hong Kong. The initial technical issues encountered by some users have been improved or resolved, and we are in a position to retire the old bilingual legislation information system on the 1st of July this year. We are progressively verifying the current version of the ordinances of Hong Kong so that electronic versions with official status will become accessible. We're also planning to make further enhancements to the system to address the valuable feedback of users. Program Five, International Law. The International Law Division will continue to provide legal advice on different aspects of international law to bureaus and departments and handle requests involving international legal cooperation. The ILD will also maintain its efforts in enhancing the promotion of the international legal and dispute resolution services of the Hong Kong SAR through cooperation with international organizations such as the Hague Conference on Private International Law and United Nations Commission on International Trade Law as well as participation in the work of the Friends of the Chair Group on Strengthening Economic and Legal Infrastructure, or SELI, under the Economic Committee of the Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation, AIPAC, so as to further raise the Hong Kong SAR's image and influence as an international legal and dispute resolution services center. Since its establishment in February 2015, SELI has been providing a platform for the Hong Kong SAR to share our experience and expertise on the use of international legal instruments to strengthen economic and legal infrastructure in addition to showcasing the strength of the Hong Kong SAR as an international legal and dispute resolution services center, including our high-quality legal profession, independent judiciary, and modern and mature legal infrastructure. Chairman, the above sets out the DOJ's major areas of work in the coming financial year. My colleagues and I will be happy to answer members' questions and listen to your views. Thank you. The Judiciary Administrator, please.
In accordance with the budgetary arrangements agreed between the judiciary and the government in 2005, the same arrangement would continue to be enforced. And that is, we will inform the government of our financial resource requirements, and the government has extended very good assistance to us. The whole process is smooth. For the 2018-2019 draft estimates, this $1.9018 billion represent an increase of $201.6 million or 11.9% over our revised estimates for 2017-18. The judiciary will be able to create 33 net additional non-judicial civil service posts and fill the relevant judicial and non-judicial vacancies and also to meet our operating expenses and strengthen court operation and provide quality service to users of our courts. I've set out in my speaking notes the relevant contents of the relevant estimates. Here, I would like to just highlight some of the important points here. First, on judicial manpower, in the coming year, there are a number of important areas to cover. First, we'd like to seek the support of this council to create four deputy registrar posts in the High Court to strengthen the master's office of the High Court to cope with its increased workload. And also, starting from the middle of 2018, we're going to launch another round of judicial recruitment exercise. We'll start with CFI judges. Then, we would recruit district judges and permanent magistrates so as to identify suitable candidates to fill the existing judicial vacancies. The third area, we would like to follow up a proposal that we have submitted to the government, and that is to extend the statutory retirement ages of judges and judicial officers. The Chief Justice has submitted the recommendations to the government. We understand these recommendations are under active consideration of the government. We hope that within the current year, we can be able to make good progress in terms of drafting the legislation and implementing the arrangements. With the extension of retirement ages of JJOs, we believe that that would enhance our efforts in recruitment and retention of judges. We'll continue to pay attention to the manpower situations of various levels of court. And if necessary, we would like to appoint deputy judicial officers and judges to meet short-term manpower needs. So this is in relation to judicial manpower. For non-judicial manpower, I'll turn to some other issue.
In the coming year, we propose to create a permanent principal executive officer post to enhance support to our operation and also coordination of different projects. We'd like to extend a non-supernumerary post for AOSGC. This is a supernumerary post, and this is to help review the family law exercise. We expect this to bring about key legislative amendments. Last but not least, we also like to have support staff who are civil servants to provide support to our work, including our IT strategy. Mr. Chairman, later on, these specific proposals will be submitted to the panel in order to seek their support, and after that, we will go to the establishments of committee and the Finance Committee in order to seek support and approval. I'd like to thank members for your views that you are going to express, and I will be very happy to take questions together with my colleagues. Five minutes each for members. Dr. KK Quoc, thank you, Chairman.
I'd like to go to SJ010, 026, and 2029. In the World Economic Forum, in terms of competitiveness, Hong Kong has enjoyed a higher ranking lately, and we are ranking sixth instead of ninth of last year. But in terms of judicial independence, we have dropped from eighth to the thirteenth. We could see that we could be proud of our judicial independence, but now it is not the case anymore. Just now, the SJ said that she has $300 million more in order to enhance more people, including those for criminal prosecution. We can see that today political elements have infiltrated into criminal prosecution, including prosecution with a political purpose. Starting from 2016, that is after the electoral elections, six members have been disqualified, and then there was the by-election, but the candidate from Demosito was ruled invalid in her application. The administration has said that it has always acted according to legal advice. This has made us feel that our judicial system has been compromised. The last SJ was very controversial, and the new SJ was also wrapped in scandals, and there is still a lot we want to find out. I'm most worried that, on the one hand, of course, we want more money for improving our judicial system, but if the extra money is spent on criminal prosecution and if the judicial system is used to suppress people who are the enemies of the government. Say, for example, this month, Mr. Leng Kwok-hung, a former legislative councillor, was prosecuted for common assault one year after an incident took place. This kind of prosecution and suppression can form a long list. I'd like to ask the SJ, I ask you the question here, and that is, how many times did you go to the liaison office in the Western District to have a heart-to-heart chat? Why don't you give me a table telling us how many times you went to the liaison office and how much money was spent? And of the $300 million, how much would be put aside for political suppression by enhancing your manpower in criminal prosecution and also farming out cases to the silk from London? Dr. KK Quoc, please refer to the questions. No, I'm talking about three particular questions, SJ010, SJ026, and SJ209. Let her answer. Who will take the questions? SJ, let me kick off. First, with regard to the World Economic Forum index, I'd like to add one point. At present, we have ranked first in judicial independence in Asia for a row of three years. Well, you can always become first if you compare with China. This is not a debate. No, I'm correcting her. Well, you have asked the question. Let her answer. Okay, I was talking about Asia. That is, Hong Kong ranks first for a row of three years in terms of judicial independence. And also, according to World Bank, we can see that the rule of law in Hong Kong has risen from or to the position of 15 in a matter of years. And the member mentioned the judicial system and prosecutions. I'd like to emphasize again, we act according to Article 63 of the Basic Law. When we make decisions to prosecute, we only look at the law, evidence, and also the code on prosecution. Whether the judgment is to take our prosecution or not take our prosecution, we would only act according to the law and our consideration of the evidence available. Of course, we also have in mind public interest. Time is up. Chairman, she has not answered me as to how many times she went to the liaison office. Sorry, you have to stick to the time because you spoke for too long yourself. Mr. Dennis Quoc, I'd like to go to SJ028 about farming out civil cases. Actually, at the AJLS panel, I asked the question, and the DOJ promised that they would give me a breakdown of all civil cases. In England, the Treasury prosecutor would have to make open the cases, which have been briefed out to 10 council who charged most. And if you don't give me the information, I cannot possibly review whether your civil case farming out system is a fair system. First of all, I'd like to have the list, please, because you promised it. SJ, I understand there was this request, and I understand they are working on it. We will compile the list as soon as possible and give it to the member. Thank you, SJ, for your reply. Because I have asked the question all these years, but this is by far the clearest answer, saying that you are going to do it. I think the English practice is the most proper one. Otherwise, the sector and the public will never know whether the briefing-out system is fair, effective, and is done according to the mechanism. I'd like the SJ to promise that the list will be given to the AJLSP or the Legislative Council as soon as possible. I think she promised you. Actually, at the AJLS panel, we already discussed this. Since I have got this promise from the SJ, I hope this indeed will be done. And then about SJ035, I asked about human smuggling and prosecution figures. In the Code on Criminal Prosecution, this is a particular matter for the attention for prosecutors. I'd like to ask about cases you have handled, and how many of them have to do with human smuggling and whether you have the figures? Because in Hong Kong, we have not done enough in terms of trafficking in persons. So can I ask the Prosecutions Division whether you have the figures? Who will take the question? Yes, Mr. Hui, thank you for the question. About trafficking in person cases, well, in fact, we can talk about human exploitation cases as a broader category. Within the Prosecutions Division, we do not have comprehensive statistics. But I'd like to take the opportunity here to say to Mr. Quoc that within the department, we pay a lot of attention to this issue. Mr. Quoc, you will know that within our department, we have used different channels to liaise with stakeholders and even Mr. Dennis Quoc himself. I understand that Mr. Quoc will know that we pay particular attention to this issue. Well, yes, that's true. In the past year, I can indeed see that you have awakened to this problem. But in the council, we want to follow up the issue. We want to know how much attention you are paying to this, and we want to have the basic information. Say, for example, how many prosecution cases in one year? And that in these cases, you can detect an element of trafficking in persons so that we can do our job, say, if people ask us, in Hong Kong's prosecution system, do frontline prosecutions understand these cases and whether they are sensitive to such cases? Right now, we are working on a private member's bill to combat trafficking in persons, and we need the information. And I hope that when you do your prosecution work, you can pay particular attention to such cases because they represent a contravention to human rights. So please, can you collate the figures for us? With regard to Mr. Quoc's question, I'd like to emphasize again the position of the administration. We will not condone trafficking in persons. We have laws covering six areas on trafficking in persons. Therefore, we will absolutely not condone the matter, and we have a comprehensive mechanism. Well, yes, I understand. If Mr. Hui is telling me, or if he can tell me in the past whether prosecutors have told you that the cases would have to engage that particular paragraph in the Code on Prosecution, then we would know how many cases have had that element in them. In the queue, we have seven members. I still have three more slots, even if we exhaust these members. Okay, please press the button if you want to ask questions. I'll read the names out. Lam Chek-tang, Ho Chi Phong, Claudia Mo, Kenneth Lau, Chan Chi Chuen, Priscilla Leng, Holden Chow, Dennis Quoc, Alvin Young, Al Knockin. I think that's about it. I'll draw a line there. Mr. Lam Chek-tang.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about JA016. It's a question asked by Mr. Dennis Quoc. This has to do with the time taken for, from the conclusion of cases to the delivery of judgments. It seems the time taken is too long. I'd like to know whether you are aware of this, whether you think it is serious? Because from the media and also from my own experience, I have seen many cases where the judge has already made a judgment in court, but the judgments would take a few months, half a year, or even a year before they are delivered. You will know that judges have to review the entire trial and the evidence that has been submitted when he makes a judgment. If an entire year has elapsed before the judgment is delivered, does it mean that the judge concerned would have to spend a lot of time to review all the information before he can write the judgment so that the efficiency is really low? And also, the parties to the case may want to follow up the case basing on the judgment, but then the process will be delayed. I'd like to know whether you are aware of the situation and whether measures have been drawn up to require the delivery of judgments within a certain timeframe. And if this is not done, there should be explanations given, and also there should be long-term monitoring to put a stop to this. Who will take the question? JA?
Thank you, thank you for the question. My reply is made on behalf of the judiciary. When judges deliver judgments, the judiciary will go through the leader of the court, say for example, High Court. Then we have the chief judge, and then in the district courts, also the leading judge. They are, of course, very much aware of the time for the delivery of judgments. We understand that in the ideal situation, especially when judgments are not delivered there and then, particularly in civil particularly in civil cases, the judgment should still be delivered within an appropriate time.
The head of different levels of courts are personally monitoring the situation. And the workload of individual judges is also monitored so that sufficient time would be allowed for not just hearing the cases, but also dealing with the delivery of judgment after conclusion of cases. In the judiciary, in the past few years, we have been facing a big problem of manpower shortage. And since manpower is short, we have to look at the waiting time for cases to be listed. So the heads of these courts, we have to balance different factors and do the best job they can. I've asked a direct question. Can I have a direct reply? Do you have a policy? Want to introduce a policy measure to monitor the time taken by judges to deliver judgment? Say, if it's a six month or three months behind the original schedule, would you give a reminder? Or do you still? Are you already doing this? There will be monthly reports to monitor the progress of different cases. In the High Court, the Chief Judge of High Court has introduced a new measure since two years ago. If a judge thinks that for some special reason, judgment cannot be delivered at an appropriate time, then the judge will to imply, to inform the parties in writing. And is there a need to inform the Superior Judge? For example, the Chief Judge? Yes, the Chief Judge receives regular reports on the progress of case management. You should come up with an indicator with a view to shortening the time taken for judgments to be delivered. Mister Ho Chi Phong, I'm concerned about the Coroner's Court and the parties involved in those cases, apart from the long waiting time and the time required in hearings. What are the replying serial number? J A oh one one and oh one two? If you look at the reply, cases requiring follow-up action, there are a half few hundred and more than a thousand. In twenty seventeen, one one two eight cases, but actual the hearing is just one hundred and seventeen case with formal death inquest concluded. But the number has increased by a number of times, from a few times to a seven times. So why is it that the number of death inquests actually concluded is so low? J A? The number of cases varies from year to year. The need to conduct a death inquest is a judicial decision. The coroner would have to pay to have regard to the information and evidence received. So there's no special reason why in a particular year, the number is on the high or low side. But in the past few years, the Coroner's Court faced tremendous increase in workload. There have been more cases. The time taken became longer. There are more cases involved, the number of professional experts and professional witnesses requiring a longer time. So the current situation with the long waiting time is not ideal. So in March twenty eighteen, we have increased the number of magistrates to work in the Coroner's Court from two to three. I'm not talking about the Coroner's Court's workload, but I'm talking about the difference, the big difference between the request and actual inquest. I know it's up to the coroners to decide whether an inquest should be concluded. But the investigation is carried out by the police. How many police officers are deployed? And how much is invested in these investigations? So the number for the further death investigation reports order is one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight. Actual inquest, one hundred and seventeen. So why is it that so many cases ended up not going through the actual death inquest process? Where the manpower deployed by the police is something beyond the judiciary. Can you confirm that there's a backlog? There's one thousand and eleven cases for which no inquest have been concluded. And the family members are waiting for a long time. According to my information, some families are waiting for three to five years before actual death inquest can be conducted. We're talking about the figures that we record for the particular year. And of course, in some cases, the inquest is not conducted in the same year as the order because the coroner may need to get hold of sufficient information in order to make a decision. So every case is different in that sense. From the perspective of the judiciary and the Coroner's Court, we'll look at how we organize our work. But for investigation and the policemanpower spent is not within the scope of the judiciary. For cases where further death investigation reports are required by the coroners, I would like to note what's the waiting time in terms of years from the time the order is issued and to the actual conclusion of the death inquest? I don't know whether we have kept statistics in such detail. For the statistics kept for the Coroner's Court, we are actually looking about the cases reported to the time and also the time needed before the inquest is conducted. It's S J fifty-two. And before I ask my questions, I want to say this to the Secretary for Justice. The foreign scenario may not have to do with the Secretary personally. In the second round of the disqualification of four pandems, if there were no M P C S C interpretation, the disqualification would not be ordered. So as a matter of fact, this S R J has not done a good job to protect us because this is in the Basic Law. We have the judiciary, the independence of the judiciary explicitly set out in the Basic Law. And you are a controversial figure to the legal profession. In relation to the Joshua Wong's questions, the sanction was a community service order. And then the D O J lodged an appeal and the Court of Appeal complied and they were sent to jail. But the Court of Final Appeal said it's okay. Young man, return home. You can say that the courts handle these cases independently. The judiciary is independent. You may say that. But the impression that you give to our people and to the international community is that this Secretary of Justice in Hong Kong has wasted public funds. Please. You have undermined the fair legal system and judicial system we have in Hong Kong so that you have turned this into a tool of intimidation. Well, I have five minutes. I haven't spoken for two minutes so far. Well, yes, you should ask questions. I didn't protest when you intervened with Doctor Quok K's questions. I have five minutes and I haven't spent two and a half so far. It's S J oh five two. I have to remind members that you should ask questions relevant to the examination of estimates. The L R C wants to look into information freedom and archives law. And since C Y Leung became C E and up to this moment, you have talked about studies and then it said that there will be a consultation. And we are close to the end of April twenty eighteen. It seems that you are unlikely to give us the report in July this year. So we may have to wait until we have a new legislative session. You have promised us that within twenty eighteen, you are going to do this. Can you explain? Although it's complicated, why can't you complete this task for five years? Secretary. Thank you for your questions. The two L R C subcommittee have looked into archives law and access to information. The consultations reports are almost completed. Only some minor refinement would be required before we can go for the public consultation exercise. As I think Miss Mo understands the work involved, we need to prepare the bilingual version and print the reports. We'll do it expeditiously. So we can have them within the coming months? And we should have them before the end of twenty eighteen, right? We are moving ahead with the translation and all the relevant processing, the textual processing has been going on. And I have a question about the number of meetings. They have had only forty-odd meetings in five years. They didn't have monthly meetings. I would have thought that if they have more regular meetings, the progress would have been better. But that's not a must, isn't it? Well, we don't have a rule that there should be a meeting every month or every two months or three months. Much would depend on the progress. And sometimes if further study and research is required, then the interval between meetings may be longer. Let me respond to one point made by Miss Mo here. In this case, seeking review of sentence, I want to correct Miss Mo's use of term that the Court of Appeal complied with the request made by the D O J to increase the penalty. That's not a correct description. The Court of Appeal actually explained why they have decided to impose a different sentence. Mister. It's S J oh three two. Under the Bay Area Development Initiative, we are going to have more interaction with the mainland and the International Law Division of the D O J will have to provide more and more services in this regard. So in relation to the manpower and in terms of training to enhance understanding of the relevant national policies, we need to do more. There are an establishment of one hundred and fifteen. How many of them in the Legal Policy Division are doing the job that I've mentioned? And is there any concrete plan to provide more training? And will the six net new posts be related to this area work? Let me say something and then I'll ask my colleague to supplement. This question is about the Bill and Road Initiative and mainland-related matters. The work, the duties are not discharged by dedicated officers. There are some officers maybe assigned to deal with these duties, but they have other duties to discharge as well.
I will ask another question. J A oh two eight asked by Mister Dennis Quoc. The Chief Justice of the C F A at the opening of the legal year said that there is a big load of cases at the courts and they would need really good judges. The administration has already said that hopefully, they can relax the retirement age of judges. I'd like to know about the adjustments made to judges' employment apart from age of retirement, whether these measures will be effective in improving the manpower situation at the judiciary? Because it was said that the remuneration is too much removed from the market rate. Will you also consider their remuneration? And also, if recruitment is not really satisfactory, what other measures can you take? J A, thank you for the question.
In the past few years, the Chief Justice has looked into the manpower situation from different angles with regard to salary and conditions of service. Last year, we have a new and adjusted welfare package for judges, especially in terms of housing and medical care. That was implemented in twenty seventeen. And every year, the remuneration adjustment of judges is done according to an established mechanism. Therefore, at this point, we think we have achieved certain progress. We hope that when we start a new round of recruitment, as I was saying, in mid twenty eighteen, we will be recruiting judges for the C F I and then district courts and then magistrates. We hope the new package will prove to be attractive. As for age of retirement, we have done a consultancy study and we also conducted an internal review. And we are proposing that we can extend the age of retirement for judges. Judges who are at C F I and above, we hope they can retire at seventy instead of sixty-five. And district courts, they will keep the age of retirement at sixty-five, but we are going to add a new mechanism. And that is for discretionary extension to seventy. And then magistrates should retire at sixty-five instead of sixty. Our view is by extending the retirement age, we can achieve two positive results, especially for judges at high courts. Because at that level, the number of judges is relatively small. Indeed, there is not such a big pool of people who are suited to become judges at that level. And therefore, we hope to be able to retain more judges at that level. And secondly, very often, when legal practitioners join the ranks of high-level court judges, that would be at the end of their career. And if we can extend the age of retirement, we will be able to attract the good people from the legal sector while they are near their retirement age. Mister H Chan, I have the introductory remarks of the S J. And in paragraph ten, she said that the Legal Policy Division will continue to discharge the important role to uphold the rule of law by providing legal support to government departments on the Basic Law, Human Rights, and Constitutional matters. I hope the S J will really deliver what she said. Because if I would read the remarks of the then S J last year, Mister Rimskey Yun, he had exactly the same paragraph in his introductory remark. But how much did he do on the basis of this paragraph? I think most people in society are very concerned. And now I would like to go to S J oh oh three, which has to do with the progress of setting up a working group on giving recognition to gender. This is because the administration lost the W case and that is why the administration set up this very high interdepartmental working group headed by the S J. And also. And also people in the sector also participated. It was set up in twenty fourteen and it has worked for four years already. And if I may go to the reply, sixteen meetings have been convened. And actually, S J, I have not had a lot of opportunity to have an exchange with you on this topic. But I did so with Mister Rimsky Yun. He said that this was an interesting but challenging and also complicated topic. Perhaps in the past, you did not pay a lot of attention to gender recognition. And indeed, we should spend more time on it. So S J, of course, you are very busy even with your personal private affairs. I don't know whether you have the time in order to give some attention to the interests of sexual minorities. And S J, after you have assumed your post, have you been at the working group meetings? My question is, you have completed the first stage of public consultation and you have received seventeen thousand submissions, which is a big number. But I believe many of them are of the same template. And a group of people might have been gathered to sign the template kind of submissions. But I'd like to know what you are doing to follow up the consultation exercise. Will you issue a report on the consultation exercise? Well, yes, this is a controversial topic in society. I hope you will not just refer to the quantity of submissions in order to make your final decision. The C F A said, what is your question? No, I I will complete this sentence first. The C F A said, if you refer to the majority view in order to refuse the aspiration of the minority, then that would fly in the face of social justice. So what is your next step and what is the overall timetable? S J, thank you for the question. I believe we are all very concerned about this topic. And in my first few months to the post, I have had one meeting with the working group. Not not too many meetings, but I'm sure the member knows this issue much better than I do. However, I can report to you the latest progress. As you know, Mister Chan, we have received seventeen thousand submissions. Some of them have the same template, but not all. Some are written in a very professional manner. The analysis is done from a legal or social point of view. And some others, in fact, venture beyond the particular topic in the consultation and they have given us very broad views on the topic. In order to collect the information, we discussed how we should handle the submissions at our last meeting. But before the entire study of the consultation result is mature, I don't think I should divulge too much how we are going to handle the submissions. But as you know, when you receive a lot of submissions, you of course want to know how many have the same template. But then we would also like to look at the quality, in other words, the contents of the submissions, and we'll have to analyze those. I hope member you will understand that it would take time for us to process this. But we are starting to do it. S J, I hope you would really seriously look into whether we need a gender recognition law in Hong Kong. And you also need to look at the relevant issue of civil partnership. And whether we should introduce a system for civil partnership or marriage. And it would be too late if you lose a case in court. Next one, Priscilla Leng.
Chairman, first question. It is for the S J. My question is at the C M A B. But I think the question should have been directed to the S J. That was my intention. Some other members also said that recently we had some cases of disqualification. And sometimes some candidates might have advocated the ideas of independence for Hong Kong or self-determination for Hong Kong. The process is for the DOJ to give legal advice. And then the presiding officer will make a decision according to the facts. I think the discretion and also the responsibility for the election officer is too much. It is just a frontline officer and I think it may not be appropriate to give the entire responsibility and discretion to the returning officer. But then that is the case under present laws. My question for the S J is whether she would agree that in terms of policy and law, we should make things more clear. Say, for example, in terms of eligibility to stand for election, if you contravene the basic law when you propose or advocate independence and self-determination for Hong Kong, say, for example, that is in relation to basic law, Article twenty-three. However, our local laws are not clear yet. And perhaps you should make the law clearer. So the political groups and also the candidate's own behavior. Dr. Leng, I must remind you that your question must be directly related to the budget. You should not ask policy questions. No, this is not about policy. Please don't stand in my way. This is a question that I must ask the S J. You need money to make laws. And I'm talking about law amendments. You should think about amending the law now. I'm saying that in terms of legislation and policy, you should give more advice to the S A L G that you should make things clear. These are two questions. I would only ask two questions. The second question has something to do with what Mister Ray Chan said. I'd like to tell the S J that, well, she was not the S J then, that the W case received the most criticism in the Legislative Council. We don't want to see another of such cases. And it was said that the Legislative Council would be required to amend the matrimonial clauses ordinance or marriage ordinance within a year. In fact, this was very resentful for us. In fact, the judiciary should not be requiring the legislature to do this. Therefore, the case is very controversial and you must try to understand the entire situation instead of siding with a particular party. And please do not jump to the proposal that you should not only look at the quantity of the submissions. Because this is not right, because it would be resenting to a lot of people who have written in. Well, you don't need to answer this one, but please spend your time on the first question.
Yes, indeed, I'd like to respond also to the second point made by Doctor Leng. No, I'm not saying that I would dismiss the submissions just because they use a template. And that is exactly why I said we need to take time to consider the submissions. The quantity is one thing, but we must also look at the content to see what can be done and what cannot be done. That would take time. I understand the views of the two members and as the DOJ and also as this S J, I'm not standing on a particular side. I'm just thinking that we should provide a platform for discussion. As for the first question, Doctor Leng, this is really a C M A B policy question. It is indeed difficult for me as S J to tell you my views on this. But basically, of course, if the law is clear, that is always good and that is a principle that is always correct. But as to a policy change, whether it should be up to the returning officer to decide, well, according to the law now, yes. And for the time being, this is the only thing we can adhere to. I don't want to comment on any policy, please. Next one, Holden Chow. Thank you. Two questions. Number one. J A O O eight, a question asked by me. I'd like to ask a follow-up. We have always asked that the amount should be enhanced for the small claims tribunal and it is said that it would be enhanced from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. It is said that you would create ten more posts, two judicial posts and eight non-directorate civil service posts. My question is, in the original system, how many civil service posts are there? And also, in the future, you say that the cases are projected to increase from forty-nine thousand five hundred to fifty-one thousand six hundred. So I'd like to know whether you have enough support staff.
Because the the supporting staff sometimes will require to do some preparation work in terms of legal issues. I want you to get prepared, otherwise the waiting time may be very long. I would like to get an answer from the J A. And I noticed from the J A's opening speech that it has not mentioned that in in the LLC is introduce or proposed the introduction of class action back in two twenty twelve for consumer cases. But this is not mentioned in the opening speech of J A. And there have been meetings of the subcommittee, but so far we have not been able to get any progress. Can you update us? J A?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your question. I will respond to the first question, and that is the raising of the jurisdiction limit of small claims tribunal, which is part of the work of the judiciary. There are seventy in the establishment for small claims tribunal, including ten judicial officers and sixty supporting staff. The increase in workload and the projections about the increase in workload would mean that we are going to increase two judicial officers and eight supporting staff. So the new establishment will be eighty instead of seventy. Depending on the workload and the deployment situation, well, we believe that the ten additional posts would enable us to cope with the relevant service requirements and the relevant needs for supporting staff. I would respond to the second question, but before that, I would like to say something about the first question. We have a mediation center set up in West Kowloon, which can help people to handle the disputes involving the small claims. The center is going to be up and running very soon to provide the services. On class action, it's complicated because one one thing may lead to another and they are all related. The working group was set up in December twenty twelve and as at the on the sixteenth of March twenty eighteen, they had their twenty-first meeting. And there's a small group set up in April twenty fourteen. They've had twenty-eight meetings so far. They are now looking into the wave forward. So it's not appropriate to publicize the progress at this point. But this is ongoing and it's not an easy task. So please bear with us so that we can continue to work for more progress. For consumers, class actions, complicated legal issues are involved. So I understand that. But I have to remind you that the report was published by the LLC in twenty eighteen. And so far, as the secretary has told us, twenty-eight meetings have been convened. So we'd like to know what the stage we are in. Please let us know the progress as far as possible. Mister Elvin Young, I have a question for Ms Lau, J A. It's a J A zero number, J A zero one nine, a question raised by Mister Dennis Quo. It's about manpower deployment. Sometimes a case required a long time to dispose of. So I would like to know from the judiciary whether in the cases referred to in question oh one nine, instead of the vague answers we have been given, can you tell us the average number of days spent by a judge for judgment to be delivered? Instead of just telling us the number of court days. Can you tell us more about the number of days spent before and after those court days? And also who is responsible for doing the assignment of cases? Thank you, J A. Let me deal with the latter part of the question first. At the different courts or in the case of High Court, they have the chief judge is responsible for giving instructions on the cases to be assigned. And some colleagues would help him with the preparation. As we set out in the reply, we look at the specialties and experience of the judges and also the language to be used in the here in the in the case, whether it's Chinese or English. And also we'll look at the schedule of the judge concern, whether there are other cases being handled and whether the judge is going to to take leave and whether there are other judicial training or other work required. So we take into account a number of factors. So we have set out in the reply that apart from ordinary criminal and civil cases, then we assign cases to those who would specialize in criminals. Cases are some or some in civil cases, in in fact, some can do both. And there are cases involving constitutional or M O T laws or the company's law as well as bankruptcy. Then the setting of the case, the schedule would be, the listing would would be done differently. We have different lists, but not all the cases under the list would be handled by the same judge depending on the nature. We have special list which will be arranged specifically. Judges in charge of those lists may also share judges with the necessary expertise and experience. So the principles involved will be devised by the chief judge of the High Court. As for the actual listing involving such special list, of course, we have staff who would provide the necessary assistance administratively. That is the system that we have for the High Court. The member also asked whether we have statistics of this nature. We don't have it. Because we're not just looking at the time spent on hearing cases. We don't have much time left. Let me finally say something about this reply and also other replies oh one four, oh one six, which are and all which are about time. If a judge handles a lot of complicated case, the time taken will be very long for those cases. So I hope the judiciary will look at the number of court days and the time spent on hearings will be made available for reference. Mister Alok Him, I have a follow-up S J O two nine. And that is providing legal advice on electoral matters. In twenty sixteen election, when legal advice was provided to returning officer, it's claimed that the Secretary for Justice do not have breakdown of the statistics. And we cannot provide breakdown on the on the manpower required. So I'm I want I'm curious why they So I'm curious why there was no such statistics. And as Miss Priscilla Leng has said, we should not ask legal returning officers to give legal advice. We don't have Article twenty-three legislation. So I don't think there should be anything on advocating Hong Kong independence. And the Secretary for Justice say this is under the purview of C M A B and she cannot handle this question. You have a standing mechanism in the form of a nomination consultative committee. So you should handle such issues during normal times instead of during election time. You should not have a nomination consultative committee when there is a fresh run of elections to return legislators. And I don't understand why there's no breakdown. Because under Program Three, electoral matters for twenty eighteen, eight hundred pieces of advice will be given. Have you prepared statistics on the number of legal advice given? I think the members make the mistake. He said the returning officers were asked to give legal advice. I think the legal, returning officer only made decisions. And he mentioned that the C M A B would be the policy bureau to appoint a nomination consultative committee. So that falls outside my portfolio and I won't be able to respond to this question. As for the reply in relation to this question, we don't have specific statistics. So when we do the estimate, as I mentioned in my opening speech, we are doing some projections in the light of current situation as we see it. And that's an estimate, that's a projection. You talk about eight hundred pieces of advice in twenty eighteen. But in twenty sixteen, you don't even have the breakdown. I don't know how you arrive at this figure of eight hundred. I have a follow-up question as well. Can you tell us a figure on the number of advice given by the Legal Policy Division, the division on subdivision on electoral matters? And how many of these cases were briefed out? Well, I can ask my colleague to supplement, but I don't think we have such clear-cut breakdowns. Solicitor General, when there's policy, legal question, issue to consider. Whether it's related to election or not, it may have to do with human rights or the basic law. And then within the D O J, our colleagues would work together. We have the Basic Law Unit and the colleagues there will help. And also we have colleagues in the Human Rights Division and they would be able to contribute their views. And then the relevant colleagues responsible for electoral matters will collate the answer before giving a comprehensive reply. We'll let, let's take a fifteen-minute break. We'll start the next session at four forty-five P M.